Okay, welcome everyone to the meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I guess I'll start with a role. I think I'm supposed to start with a roll call of the people who are present. So Elizabeth Akers Moore.
Here.
Theo Kinderman.
Present.
Bobby. Falia, Falia, excuse me, I'm blowing this stuff. And Tom Swaim.
Here.
Terrific. I'm gonna thank you all for coming. I think that the the procedure, as many of you have known, is that in general, you will be on mute while we're in discussions. Admitted to speak and as you are called upon or as your matter is before us. We're going to take one thing out of order very quickly here. There is a there is a small administrative matter that we were normally would take at the end of the business involving 13B Commonwealth Avenue, a previous permit that we had granted. And and given the nature of the meeting where we'd like to try to slot that in quickly here before we embark on the various public hearings and people are entering the room anyway. So is the Elizabeth Hughes is the people from Commonwealth Avenue here? Can you help us out with that one?
So Patrick Clary is here and he's going to give a really, really quick presentation.
Okay, Mr. Clary.
Hello, everyone. Hi. If I could do screen sharing.
Yeah, and yeah, while you're getting on, you can identify yourself and all that for the record, please.
Great. My name is Patrick Clary. I am with Brookside Square Owner LLC. I'm one of the original developers and current owners of Brookside Square in West Concord.
So Patrick, 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 I'm going to ask you to turn off your video and see if that helps with your audio because you're frozen.
Oh. Okay. Does that help?
So far, but you're still frozen. So if you want to turn your audio off, I mean, your video off, that's fine.
Yep, I turned my video off. There was a car accident in front of my house just a couple of minutes ago and apparently knocked out power. So I'm on my phone's Wi-Fi right now. So hopefully it gets us through.
Okay.
And can you hear me still, Elizabeth?
Yeah, just yeah, let's see if we can get the screen share and get this through. Yep. Maybe not.
All right. Can you see that by any chance?
No.
Not me. Can you see that, Elizabeth?
No.
I can relocate to another.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
And be back in about a half hour if you'd like.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, we'll take you then. We'll we'll figure it out. All right.
Thank you so much.
Oh, there it announced as you.
Sorry.
Okay, I think we're moving on. Oh, maybe. Well, I think it's coming in so slowly that right now it says it started screen sharing and it's like loading so slowly that you're not. Oh, there we go.
I can be at a better spot in a in about a half hour.
That's why I should do that. That'd be good. Thanks. Okay, can we get back to the or is he is he attacked our Zoom here? Can we get back? Can we get rid of his stuff? There we go. All right. So moving right along. Sorry. First, the first now item on the business is Cutting Edge Homes Inc. for a special permit under section 7.1.3 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to construct a 300 square foot addition on an existing 4,519 foot dwelling, a nonconforming house on a lot on 51 Coolidge Road. And who do we have for the applicant?
Hello, my name is Sean Cutting. I am the owner of Cutting Edge Homes Architects and Builders. And before I get started, as I had had a conversation with Elizabeth earlier today, I'm not sure where the 300 square feet came from in in the blurb there. We've got the addition at about 155 square feet. So I just wanted to to correct that. But so we've got an existing single family dwelling off of Coolidge Road. It's an existing nonconforming house that upsets the front setback of 40 feet. The front right of the home is 31 feet. We're in a residence aid district, and this is a nine and a half acre property. We're proposing a single story garage bump out in the front left of the home that will require an extension to an existing nonconformity. The proposed addition will also hold the current minimum of 31 feet to the front lot line. By holding this existing minimum front setback, the structure with the proposed addition will not be more detrimental to the existing nonconformity under 7.1.3. The purpose of the project is to add some architectural elements and interests to the front of the house, which is what the client's request was. And also to break down some of the structures, the client felt that the house was monolithic and by us doing this this minor front bump out, we're able to break down the garage proportions as you see in the elevations. It's a gable roof with a shed roof on the mudroom. The addition is about six feet deep, 25 and a half feet wide or long. And the proposed addition is in an already asphalted area. There will be no change to the parking. And last night, we received approval from the NRC as we're inside a 100 foot wetland buffer and they approved us last night on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cutting. Questions from the board?
I don't have any.
I don't either. I assume Ray and Elizabeth, you agree with that. It's really only 100 and whatever it was, square feet as opposed to 300 and whatever we have in our application.
We have 300 in the application. I assume somebody thought it was a two story addition instead of a one story addition.
So Ray or Elizabeth, are we okay with that?
Yeah, I'm not too sure where the 300 square foot number came from. But I mean, even if it was 300 square feet, the concern here is a setback. I mean, I think the FAR on this law is something like 100,000 square feet.
We're okay there.
Um, yeah, no, I don't have any questions. I think it will accomplish what you're trying to do with breaking up that facade.
Okay, we open it up to public comment if any. Anyone like to speak on the 51 Coolidge Road application? I'm not seeing anyone, but okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Yeah, discussion, I think that I think that, yes, there is comment, somebody?
Yes. So if people want to speak, you should use the raise hand function, you know, immediately and go ahead.
Sorry, Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green Unit 4. I just want to the zoning board of appeals since each of the the issues that comes before you is a requires a special permission. This is the only legal way we have of implementing our new all electric heat pump style environmental regulations that we pass at town meeting. I would urge you to please require all people who come for a special permit here to follow those new rules. It'll be cheaper for them anyway. Because we don't have any other legal way of enforcing them.
Thank you, Ms. Dritt. I'm, I know. Okay.
As I just want to clarify, but this is a unheated and uncooled garage. So there's no, there's no HVAC elements on on this on this particular project.
Might be a perfect opportunity to improve the rest of the house.
Ms. Dritt, Ms. Dritt, I'm going to give you all the time you need to make this point probably several times tonight, but but let's just keep it going. Okay? So anything further? Other comments? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Anything further? I mean, I think that the key to this to my mind is the fact that the 31 foot setback is in an entirely different part of the house. This is not even really affecting whatsoever the issue of where the house is close to the setback line. It's really a very minor change in a place. It's a long way away. So anything further?
I assume there's nothing that we need to worry about on the NRC side. That's having not seen that decision. Okay. No, I don't have anything. I, Theo, I can make a motion. Okay. I move that we approve the application by Cutting Edge Homes Inc. for a special permit under section 7.1.3 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to construct three, whatever is the actual number, square foot.
151.
151 square foot addition on the existing 4,519 square foot dwelling on a nonconforming house and lot at 51 Coolidge Road, parcel number 3955. Finding under section 7.1.3 that such alteration is not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity nonconforming structure to the neighborhood and under 11.6. Also not finding it you know, detrimental. Elizabeth, fill in words that I'm missing, but.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Theo. Ms. Akers Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Smith. I. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Cutting.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it. Have a great night.
Next on the agenda, we have Bowden Lysich for a special permit under section 7.2 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to construct a pool within the floodplain conservancy district at 245 Park Lane. Is the applicant here somewhere?
Yes. So my name is Ian Ainsley. I am the engineer that prepared the plan and filing here on behalf of the homeowner. I believe they're on here as well, Bo and Lisa Lysich, but I'm not sure. But I'll be presenting the plan. So if I could just share, share my. Can you see the plan?
Screen share? Can, thank you.
Sure. So this is an existing single family house on Park Lane. The homeowners would like to construct a pool in the rear. The vast majority of the property is in the floodplain, or at the very least, the vast majority of the backyard, which is where people want to put a pool. So we have tried to locate the pool as little in the floodplain as possible. You can see this kind of a thick black 122 elevation contour kind of coming right down the middle of the back. Everything to the right or to the north of that is in the floodplain conservancy district. And everything to the left and to the south is not. So we tried to get it out of there, about half of it as much as we can. Also realizing that there is a setback, structure setback from the property line. It's kind of the dashed line right there. So we've kind of gotten to the sweet spot to reduce the amount of floodplain work needed as much as possible. This is going to be a pool, full decking, an 18 inch high retaining wall. And then some landscape plantings as well. This is required to get a special permit for any work in the floodplain conservancy district. We have been to the planning board who issued a positive or a recommendation for approval to you, I believe in a letter form, which you should have. And we have also gotten a order of conditions from the Natural Resources Commission a couple of months ago. So you're kind of the the last stop we need to get the special permit for this and apply for a building permit and get going. So I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board?
I'm all set.
Elizabeth, you okay?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, great. So Elizabeth Hughes, any color to add on your letter to us containing the recommendation of the planning board?
Nope, the planning board recommended approval. The project exceeds the one and a half to one compensatory storage.
Fantastic. I don't have anything further. Can we open this up to public comment? If any. Raise hands function, anything like that? I'm not seeing anything. Anybody else who's a host seeing anything? Okay, great. Want to close the public hearing? You know, obviously, this seems pretty straightforward and appreciate the planning board's recommendation, which I think satisfies our the need to go through the various standards because those are already played out in that in that letter. Any further discussion or can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to issue a special permit on the section 7.2 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to construct a pool within the floodplain conservancy district at 245 Park Lane, parcel 1820.
Second.
Okay, all is in favor, Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Ms. Akers Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Smith, I. Motion is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Ainsley. You can go on and get your building permit, I guess. Thank you. Next stop is Ray. All right. Next meeting is 7:10. Greg Adams, 96 Conant Street LLC for a special permit under section 7.1.3, 7.1.5 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw to demolish an existing 1,058 square foot dwelling and construct a new 2,873 square foot dwelling that is over 50% larger than the existing gross floor area and a lot on 96 Conant Street and 96 Conant Street. So Mr. Adams or other representative of the applicant?
Yes, Elise Stone is here representing Greg Adams.
Okay, just one second, just one second, Elise. Sorry. There's a raised hand, Ms. Katz. Do you have a?
No, I was responding to your request that we raise hands early if we want to comment during the comment.
Okay.
I'm just following directions.
Okay, well, I'll let you, I'll let you, we'll get to you. But yeah, you've 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 beat the gun by by a good couple of minutes here, Ms. Katz. So you're you're on. Okay, Elise, could you identify yourself for the record and make a presentation?
Yes, excuse my voice. I have a cold. My name is Elise Sarah Stone and I'm the architect for Greg Adams. So 96 Conant Street is a small older home built in 1896. It's one of the group of houses that are are being sold along Conant Street that have been rentals for many years. The house is in residency and it's it's nonconforming in square footage and not in frontage. They do have enough frontage. So the required is 10,000 square feet in residency and this has 6,976 square feet. The proposed dwelling is a single family house with a single car garage. The the square footage of the first and the second floor are 2384, so just under 24 feet, 2,400 square feet. And then there is the potential for another 130 square feet in the third floor. You know, just up to the allowable FAR. The allowable FAR on this site is have it here is 2872. Oh, no, no, that's yes, yeah, it's 2874, sorry. And then our proposal is 2872, just depending on you know, the, you know, what is agreed on the first and second floor and then whatever we have left over, we'll finish a little place for a little office on the third floor. But it is a three bedroom dwelling. The garage is 350 square feet, but the livable square footage really on the first and second, like I mentioned, is under 2,400 square feet. So it does adhere to all the setbacks and the height, obviously. And so it's just, it's we're over the 50% of that existing house.
Questions from the board?
All set.
All set, too.
I guess I'm I'm going to ask, I'm not sure that I followed the square foot question. So that the FAR is 28, 2,800 square feet?
Yeah, 2872.
Right.
Five square feet. That's the allowable FAR. And the proposed is, I mean, I'm sorry, sorry.
You're, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, my head cold is getting to me. I'm just a little muddled. No, the allowable is 2874. That is what is allowed for this site. The proposed is 2872.5.
And you and you were making the point that the garage is 350 feet of that was part of that. I think that's where I was kidding. Okay.
Exactly. Yes, exactly.
Thanks very much. Ms. Katz, we're going to open the public hearing and Ms. Katz, you get to be first.
Well, I'm so excited to be first. Actually, not. I was hoping to be second. Um, well, we've, you know.
Ma'am, sorry, sorry. I need you to list your name and address for the record.
Sorry, Cynthia Katz, 20 Conant Street, down the road from this proposed thing. And as Elise pointed out, it is one of numerous houses that have been rentals on Conant Street that are being sold by the single owner of them. But what you might not know is that this was one of the first developments in West Concord. And if West Concord had a historic district similar to Concord Center, this would surely be part of it. There were eight identical houses built by the Damon Mill owner for the Italian mill workers because they recognized the need to have housing for for low and moderate income people. So right now there are still four houses from that original eight. This will now be once this is torn down, there will be four after this is torn down. And I think what I want to point out is that that one of the reasons Concord passed zoning bylaws about the 50% is because that's what they want. We want to have our bylaws upheld. And what we hear time and time again, when a project like this comes up is, well, it's a neighborhood in transition. Well, there's nothing we can do. And I would contend that it's the zoning board's responsibility to really be scrupulous about a lot of the issues that are part of how this town is growing and changing. So I'm really saying, I I hope that we will start hearing. Yes, we will uphold zoning bylaws. And yes, there is something we can do. Because that's what this is about is this street has quite a range of housing right across the street from this particular places is a big apartment complex, a condo complex. So but time and time again, a developer buys a house that they kind of go, well, we see the writing on the wall and the ZBA will pass it. So I'd like to encourage you to uphold our zoning laws. And I know I will be appreciative and many others will be too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katz. Other, sorry, other, I'm just, Ms. Stone, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to see if we have some other comments before I turn to you. Other comments, Mrs. Miller? Is that right, Miller? Yes.
Janet Miller, 1647 Main Street. I just want to say I really agree with what Cynthia had to say, and I don't need to say it again.
We appreciate your conciseness, Ms. Miller. Ms. Dritt?
Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green Unit 4. I want to reiterate that we need new construction to be all electric, net zero, as our new town meeting passed rules are. Is this proposed project that?
You know, I would have to defer.
I'm sorry, Ms. Stone, I'm actually gonna, I'm just actually gonna go to the to Elizabeth Hughes and and have her provide education to us in terms of the relevance of the town, of the town meeting bylaw.
So there is no town, there is no bylaw that has been passed, town meeting passed a passed a warrant article to direct the select board to file home rule petition with the legislature to allow the town to go forward to adopt a bylaw. That process has not taken place. There's, there's definitely, you know, a strong sustainability movement within the community. But currently, the Board of Appeals does not have the ability to require somebody who has the ability to connect to a gas line and to tell them that they can't do that.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes.
The thing is, though, that we won't have the ability to do that for many years. And in the meantime, things come through you, the zoning board of appeals, and you can request that they do that as a.
Ms. Dritt, I think you're absolutely correct. We can request. We cannot require and we and we have and we understand the point. And it's one that we think is very important. And we understand where the town is heading on this. And we're going to make our efforts to do that. But I just want to make sure that we're clear about the difference between what we can require and what we can request.
Right. But you have the power not to approve it.
We have the power not to approve certain things to the extent that they don't meet the standards under the bylaws. And I don't think that it is, I don't think that it would be personally, don't think that it would be, we would be able to uphold or to to win a court battle in a situation in which we were trying to impose a, as a requirement now, something that is clearly at a stage of not being a requirement yet. But we have the policy, we have the ability under the bylaw to look at neighborhood needs. And we will, and we will continue to do so. And we have heard you. So I mean, but you are asking us to do something that we do not.
And we have to do something. The 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 state laws is behind the science.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Ms. Drit. Okay, Ms. Stone, do you have comments on the comments from Ms. Katz and Ms. Miller?
Yes. You know, these homes were rented for many, many years and they are in really very poor condition. I have been through a few of these houses and have actually looked at them to be purchased by people who are looking, you know, buyers, not, not developers. And the, the updates were absolutely significant. And they would probably be before you with similar requests. And we feel that, you know, the house proposing is not a large house by most standards in Concord today. 2,400 square feet, and we are doing a single car garage also. So, you know, we feel that we've, you know, tried to be respectful to the neighborhood and not build anything large. Obviously, we can't with the F A R. But, you know, we do feel that it does fit into the other houses that have been built along Conan Street.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. One of the things that we've asked for, Ray, maybe you can help us out. And, and I would say to people who are trying to to developers and so forth, that we kind of were, were working on this before and, and we haven't seen it so much is, is the extent to which we have the map, if we do of the non-conforming versus conforming lots on that particular street. So.
I did do that. Yeah, we did do that research a little. And there, there was one that was on 62 Conan that was, a special permit was issued. I don't know, 19 maybe, something then. That was one that I saw that had been non-conforming. So 62 is in the blue there. So there's a few of them.
So then, so Elizabeth Hughes, the non-conforming are in blues, is that correct?
So the blue are lots that are non-conforming due to area. The orangish color are, and this is Wedgwood Common, so that's doesn't count. The orange lots are lots that are non-conforming to frontage. So there's, and then this pinkish color is, it's non-conforming for area and frontage. So there's this really small lot here, and then 96 is down here.
Thank you. Ms. Galus.
Anya Galus, 62 Prescott Road. Thank you for your thoughtful deliberations. I just want to point out that what Ms. Katz and what Ms. Miller said were directed at the board and not the applicant. And I agree with their general sentiment that despite your very thoughtful deliberations, that you apply the existing zoning bylaws that have been approved by the Attorney General more meticulously in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galus. Any other comments? I'm not seeing anything.
Someone else has their hand up, Richard Harrington.
Oh, okay. Mr. Harrington.
Rich Harrington from Harrington Associates. We are complying with your zoning bylaw. We properly applied for the special permit and we're following your rules. And we comply with all the special permit requirements. And this home was the same home that Elise designed over on the end of Conan when Lasburg heads to Commonwealth over the Bucket Bridge. So we are having similar architecture in the neighborhood, similar to the earlier homes that were mentioned earlier about the Italian workers. So we have current workers and you'll have similar symmetry at each end of Conan Street with this home design. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Okay, having suggested that I knew what I was doing here at the Zoom meeting in my first time chairing, I, and having been proved, I doubt. Is there any other questions, comments? I'm going to close public hearing. Thank you very much for your comments, everyone.
I have a question. Where's demolition delay? It's subject to it, 1896. Richard.
Ms. Stone, yeah.
Elizabeth, that review's been done. I have, I have a copy of that in the file.
Okay, and so they have judged, I mean, this is speaking to the historic elements of this house. So they said that there's nothing of.
Like no historical value, that they could go ahead and demolish the house.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. The comments from the board.
I, I mean, I agree with you. It's very helpful to see those maps. And I'm not convinced by that short view we had of it. I just, I'm not completely understanding how much impact we could have on this neighborhood, understanding the Wedgwood Common is right there, too. So I don't know, I'm interested in what other board members think. Yeah, so.
Well, yeah, it's Wedgwood Common and in the large apartment complex across the, across the road, right? There's also the.
Right, I'm just looking at that strip, you know, right along Conan, 96, 80, 70, 62, 46, 48.
Right, you don't really, I mean, having been there, Wedgwood Commons and that strip doesn't really have an impact on that strip. It's, you know, you don't really sense it when you're there. So I think it, I think that the, that particular run of the street is, is pretty independent of everything other than the apartment complex. I mean, one of the questions I think I have is whether or not we ought to take a look at this. I think that it's, it's to the points that were made by Ms. Miller and Ms. Katz. The, the standard here in the zoning bylaw that we're trying to follow is a standard that that does not, well, I'll step back and say that there are really two bylaws here in play. One is the, the so-called, the F A R, the, the, the maximum size bylaws. That's the one that we were talking about with the 2,874 feet. That was passed by the town, and that's a zoning bylaw that has is very, very difficult to, to get a permit to get around. You have to show really pretty substantial hardship. And that was designed for the town to say that they didn't want in certain zoning districts, houses to exceed a certain size. And that is certainly the case here. The second piece is the question about whether or not on a non-conforming lot, and that, the first one applies whether it's a conforming lot or a non-conforming lot. The second question is whether on a non-conforming lot, you can increase the size of a house by more than 50%. We have had situations in town where there are largely non-conforming lots. Virtually every lot is a non-conforming lot. And the board has been quite strict in trying to keep the size of those houses reasonable, because that was what fit into the basic neighborhood. The permit goes to the question of the character of the neighborhood. That's the, the, the standard that we're looking at primarily is character of the neighborhood. And you're trying to think about how those homes fit into the character of that particular neighborhood. And where you have a large portion of the land that is non-conforming. And the houses that are on that land are of a certain size. One can imagine that through not granting special permits, that you can help maintain the character of the neighborhood. They can go to a completely other end of the spectrum. If you have one non-conforming lot, you know, in a neighborhood and everything else is conforming, then you have to imagine that every one of those houses can, as a matter of right, under the town of Concord's zoning bylaw, be built to the level of the F A R statute, probably. And so the, it becomes much more difficult to suggest to somebody that they can't build a house that's within, that's something over the 50% level. Sometimes those 50% actually bring a small house up to the level that's similar in the houses in the neighborhood. Sometimes it brings it up to a level that's similar to the houses that are on conforming lots. But it's a, it's a balancing act. The one question I have for the board, and we're going to be, and I don't, it is whether or not this is a street where there are a sufficient number of non-conforming lots and sufficient issues that whether we should take a look at this, or if this is one that we think we can make a decision on without a site visit.
I like the idea of a site visit. I think you're getting exactly at the point that I was getting at. It's hard to look at it in a map and, and get a sense if we could have a real, whether this is going to have a real impact on, on the neighborhood going forward. So I'd be in favor of a site visit.
My second that. So I think at this stage, what we will do, the, if there's other questions, I'm happy to deal with that. I might want to think about it, but I do think that we want to take a look at this. I am semi-guessing that we might want to take a look at the next applicant as well. And they're both on Conan Street. They both have a chance to be, to have some impact on that. And happy to try to schedule site visit to look at both, but certainly for purposes of this discussion, that's, we're looking at 96 Conan Street at the moment. Elizabeth Hughes, can we pull that off?
Um, sure. Heather can, Heather can send out just an email and figure out if, when everybody's available or if the board wants to go together as a board and have a site visit, or whether each member wants to go individually. So Heather will send out an email to everybody and figure out whether everybody's schedules can align or not.
And Ms. Stone, will you be able to, in connection with that, to put some stakes in the grounds that we can see exactly where this house is going to be or, or how that varies?
Yes, we can.
We can do that.
Mr. Harrington, yes, okay, great.
And then, and then also, Mr. Harrington noted that there is a similar house nearby or the, the same house pretty much built nearby. Wouldn't mind having the address again of that, so that we can, we can just look at that house, look at the house.
Yeah, good point, yeah.
Do you recall the address, Mr. Harrington?
It's the White House as you leave West Clarket, heading towards the Rotary on the left-hand side. It's either Lasburg or Commonwealth. You showed all the parcel that map that's on there.
Okay, well, you can, somebody can send us the exact address, that'd be helpful. Thank you, Mr. Harrington. So I think this would be really, really helpful. I, this is the, to me, the, the map in this area, it's, it's a tough, not tough. It's a, it's an interesting area. And it is, and it is a, an area that's in transition. So I think that, you know, it's, it's worth taking a look at, very much worth taking a look at. All right, let's see, I have a message from somebody. You can just say it, Elizabeth.
No, that's fine. So at this point, the board would want to continue the public hearing.
Right.
To your September
ninth.
Ninth meeting. And you could continue this at seven o'clock.
Okay, Ken, so first, can I get a motion to continue the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make motion to continue your public meeting for 96 Conan Street LLC for a special permit on the section 7, 7.1.3, 7.1.5 and 11.6, zoning bylaw at 96 Conan Street to our September 9th meeting at seven o'clock.
Second.
Hey, Mr. Kindermans.
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Akersmore.
Aye.
Mr. Smith, aye. Okay, great. That is what we shall do. Thank you very much, Ms. Stone and Mr. Harrington. We'll look forward to seeing the property.
Thank you.
All right, next, moving on down Conan Street.
Well, actually, Ms. is back.
Oh, my goodness, he is. Well, there you go. All right, we're going to take a, just a very short break and see if Mr. Cleary can help us with one item on our agenda. For those of you who had not been on, we're, we have a couple of items at the very, at the end of this agenda. We expect to take quite a while and we're trying to allow Mr. Cleary and people not to necessarily have to hang around for extended period of time. So, Mr. Cleary, this is on 13B something Commonwealth.
Commonwealth Ave, correct. And if I could, I appreciate you letting me back in. Sorry for that little, little drama at the Cleary household tonight. But if I could share my screen, that would be great.
Okay.
All right. Does that show up?
Yep.
Wonderful. So for those of you who may not remember me, my name is Patrick Cleary. I am one of the owners and original developers of Brookside Square in West Concord. We, I'm here tonight to talk about a couple of revised or revisions to the concept that we brought through the zoning board of appeals and the planning board last December. It was part of an amendment to the original Brookside Square special permit, but having to do with 13B Commonwealth Ave, which is a completely separate, separately owned parcel. Brookside Square in its entirety is outlined in red, but we're going to be focusing on just 13B. And you may remember that in December of last year, we were approved for a mixed use building that is three stories. It has eight residential units spread between the second and third floors with ground floor commercial slash retail. This was the design that after about three years of working very closely with the West Concord Advisory Committee, we were fortunate enough to have approved. And we were very excited about it. We still think it's a beautiful building. We based a lot of the design, as you may remember, on the old Association Hall building that once existed at the east end of Commonwealth Ave. That was built in 1890 and unfortunately burned down at least the top two stories in 1903. And today, of course, is the location of the salt box kitchen. The design, as you can see, and I won't go into too much detail on this, was based very, very much off of the old design of Association Hall. And just to orient everyone, coming down Commonwealth Ave, heading west from the east, this was the view. You might remember that we bumped the east side of the building back five feet to give that long, over 100 feet of frontage on Commonwealth Ave. The effect of being two separate buildings coming in from the west, heading east. This was the the western facing facade with the Concord Junction, which we've subsequently changed to West Concord Junction, being the signature architectural moment that is called for in the West Concord Design Guidelines. I mentioned during the approval process that unfortunately, the architect that we had been working so closely with was killed in a car accident, unfortunately. So after we got through the approval process, we transitioned to a new architect. And as you can imagine, And as you can imagine, bringing that architect up to speed on how important the location is, all the thought, all the, the planning that went into this pretty unique building. You know, we had to engage in a number of conversations with that architect to bring them up to speed. And the things that we focused on in explaining the, the approach was, you know, the inspiration from Association Hall to fit in with the architectural and historic tradition of West Concord Village. We wanted it to make, make it look like two buildings. There was a recurring theme throughout our conversations that the building needed to be, you know, have simple elegance. It was a recurring theme we kept coming back to. And it need to be a significant architectural statement for not only people entering West Concord Junction, it's really the gateway into the village, but also it's going to be the last building that people see on their way out of the village. So we very much wanted to have it be a bookend on Commonwealth Ave with what was the memory of Association Hall to the east with a tribute to that building on the west end of Commonwealth Ave, but have it be a modern interpretation. So we were very excited to launch and get into our building permits, building drawings. We asked this new architect, John LaFreniere from HFA to simply be our production shop and really turn out construction drawings. But over weeks and weeks went by and we heard crickets from him and
Patrick, Patrick, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here because the board has a really long meeting. If you can just get to the, the elevations and that would be great.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
This was the, the new plan that he put in front of us. And he hit upon all of the bullet points that we were focused on. And made the point which he convinced me that it actually was more of a tribute to Association Hall. So if you compare the new design with the old design, I agreed with him. And so we have been working on new designs, and this is what we have come up with. We presented this in front of the West Concord Advisory Committee last week and got great support from them. There are a few items that I can run through, but I can also just fly through them if people don't want to, to go into the detail. Into the detail, but this is the same angle. Coming from the west.
What I'm gathering is, what I'm gathering is that the thing that we're trying to look at is this, this not, what I'll call a notch at the end of the corner there.
It's really, we did a few things. We did a notch here. That makes the front more prominent. We switched the colors of the, of the sides. We flop, we flip flop them. So the red is now on the, the left or the west. But we also changed the window line around the majority of the building so that, you know, in the old facade on the left, the two-story effect went around the entire building. And what that actually does is kind of dilute and water down the impact of what we're trying to do with those windows. It actually makes it a little bit more of a gimmick than what we would like, which is a prominent architectural statement. And then what we also did, you can see on the eastern side, we split those windows up. So, you know, they are individual windows on the second and third floor. We changed the color after getting some comments the first time around for the first floor of the eastern building to be a light gray. We made some subtle changes to the balconies, which, you know, they're subtle. You may not notice them. You may not care, but I'm very happy with them. And these are the other sides of the building. So we have not made any other changes. You know, to the site plan, it's still the same footprint. We made a small change to the recessed areas of the west and east entrance to this, on the storefront. We changed a, this is calling out a balcony that we switched to the front. But there's really no change to the site plan, and it's really just the the facade redesign.
And Elizabeth, we're here because our plan went to a specific, our approval went to a specific design. Is that correct?
Your approval went to the specific design that was that Patrick showed previously, but it did allow for some minor architectural elements to be changed and for the building commissioner and myself to review those minor architectural changes. We felt that this was a little bit, a little bit more than just a minor change, but not one that would require a complete modification to the special permit. So it's coming before the board as an administrative item. But we did ask that he go to the West Concord Advisory Committee, which he did last week, and they did vote their complete support for this new redesign.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
I, I, I agree with the applicant and also with Elizabeth. This is a neat, a little bit more than just a tweet to a building facade. But, you know, it's very similar to what was approved originally, and I, I do think it's a fast, it's actually a fast improvement on what, what was approved. I think the color switch is a, is a big, big help. And then just the architectural details and the sort of the roof, the raising of the take, taking, taking those small windows out of the top is a, is it is, is, is a very good gesture.
I agree.
Ms. Drit, this not a, there's not a public hearing on this particular one. It's an administrative matter. So if you have a point of order, I'm happy to hear it, but it's not, and it's not for public comment.
Yeah, I was just wondering if they are, if, I think it's beautiful if the person is, if the builder is planning to do all electric with solar on that beautiful flat roof. And battery backup, which would reduce the cost of running the building significantly. And improve the the, the energy of the town of Concord as well.
Uh, so that was, yep.
Go ahead, Mr. Cleary.
Uh, that was a, a big point of conversation throughout the process. When I was in front of the ZBA last winter, I promised that we would study it very closely and get with our experts. We have done that, and I'm happy to come back and report that we are agreeable to do 100% electric for the residential. We would like to at least stub, have the ability to stub gas to the commercial only because we don't know who the commercial tenants are going to be. We don't know what their requirements are. We don't know 10 years from now, 15 years from now, you know, what their requirements are going to be. If we never have to turn the gas on, that would be fine with us. You know, we will be able to operate 100% electric on the retail, and we would love to. It would just be if a tenant, for some reason, you know, is not willing to educate themselves on electric versus gas, and it was a deal killer for them.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary. Ms. Cats, again, it's not a public hearing, Ms. Cats, but do you have a question?
I do have a question. Thank you. I'm wondering if there are any, if any of these eight units are affordable as we are, you know, looking at, we, we passed a duplex last week. We're looking at another one and tonight. And the town becomes very vulnerable to 40B if we don't require affordability in new builds.
So this project has already received a special permit, and, and that is part of the special permit. There's two affordable units.
Thank you. Excellent.
Good. Yeah, that's why it's an administrative thing. We've already covered a lot of these things, but thank you for all those updates. Appreciate it. Welcome. There's nothing further. I'd love to move on to a motion here to accept these administrative changes.
Sure, I so move.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Ms. Akersmore?
Aye.
Mr. Smith, aye, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Cleary. Thank you for everyone, and I'm glad to see it's going to be an electric building. That was very helpful. All right. We are now moving back over to Conan Street. And this is a Bentley Building Corporation for Special Permit under sections 4.2.2.1, 11.6 of the bylaw, zoning by law for a 3,200 square foot two-family dwelling and two detached one-car garages at 116 Conan Street. Is there somebody here from Bentley Building or?
Yes, Jim Kelly. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Kelly. You want to turn on your, you can turn on your video if you want. I don't know.
I'm not that good looking.
Okay, well, we'll let you proceed.
So my name is Jim Kelly with Bentley Building Corp. Mark White is with me on the line here, and Elise Stone is the architect behind the proposed two-family. So we're seeking approval to build a townhouse-style two-family residence at 116 Conan Street in accordance with the bylaw 4.2.2.1. The home to be raised is non-conforming structure due to the east wall encroaching aside setback. So on the right-hand side of the plot plan, as you can see right there, that existing structure is in the side yard setback. The home to be raised is about 1,620 square feet and was built in 1947. The replacement structure will conform to all dimensional regulations as specified in the Town of Concord zoning by law, including the floor area ratio coverage, height, parking, and setback requirements. Each unit will comprise of three bedrooms and about 1,800 square feet of total living space. The allowable far for this lot is 4,342 square feet. And the proposed two-family with two detached single-car garages measures 4,262 square feet. So we're under the far for the lot. We believe our proposal to provide two moderately sized housing units on our site is directly, it is directly in keeping with the 2018 envisioned Concord Comprehensive Long Range Plans Housing Goal Number Five. And with section 4.2.2.1 as recently amended. We feel that the alternative for two units at 116 Conan Street is preferable to a single 4,000 square foot plus or minus home as more in harmony with the immediately adjacent properties and their current uses as an excellent option for smaller households and thoroughly consistent with the smart growth planning strategies for greater density close to transit and other nearby resources such as shopping and the local playground. We're targeting electric as the energy source for heat in this project. And this is a conforming lot, so we don't necessarily have to put a townhouse on it. We think that the town has been requesting that pretty significantly here over the last couple of years. So we're proposing it, but if we, if we do not get the special permit, we'll, we'll put a single-family home on it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. So I just, I'm going to just ask Ms. Hughes a second, so that the, or Mr. or Ray, what's the, is the so it's there before specifically for the two-family? Is that what I'm gathering?
That was Article 38 in the town warrant that got passed. So it allows two families in residency. And it doesn't speak of lot size or anything, just residency, a two-family would be allowed by special permit.
Perfect. Questions from the board? Hearing none. Mr. White, you're one of the applicants here. Would you, you have something to add? Sorry.
Yeah, I'm Mark White, 233 Independence Road in Concord. Just wanted to point out that it's a bylaw that was passed overwhelmingly at town meetings just recently. So it's, it's something that town-wide, this is the direction that the residents are telling us to go in.
Agreed. Thank you very much, Mr. White. So we have, so we, so we have an attempt to follow the bylaw and attempt to follow the West Concord Plan and even electric heat and air conditioning. So guys are, are working hard. Other questions from the board? All right. I'm going to open it up to public comment. Okay. Hearing none. Closed public meeting.
Close, close public comment.
Close public comment, sorry. Close a public comment. Yeah, I'm new at this. Any other? Any other questions? I mean, we did speak a little bit about whether we'd want to take a look at this one at the same time as we looked at the other one on Conan Street. But they certainly are making an effort here to check the boxes. That's for sure in a conforming lot.
Right, and the alternative here is a big, single-family house. Family house. So to me, the benefit of the two-family outweighs how, giving extra, extra square footage, which we're actually not giving any extra square footage now that I said that. So.
Yeah, all we're trying to do is see if it meets the two-family bylaw, right?
Right, yeah.
That's the issue.
Right, they, they could, I think, build the same building here.
Yeah.
With just one front door, right? And then they didn't, they wouldn't be here. So, yeah, I yeah, I know we said sort of at the other on Conan that, you know, we had maybe second one to look at, but you know, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with not, not having a look at this, this site, and I'd be in, in favor of approving this.
Since it's a new bylaw, Elizabeth, can you remind us of the specific findings that are important here?
The findings would just be the required findings under 11.6. The the only time the board has to make a special finding under the new two-family bylaw is if somebody is seeking a reduction in the amount of the required parking. Then the the board may grant a special permit to allow fewer than the required amount of parking spaces if the board finds that the proposed two-family dwelling is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this section and that the reduction in the required amount of parking will not be detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it's located. This applicant is providing two one-car garages, so there would be a parking space in the garage and then a parking space outside in front of the garage.
Right, great. Thank you. All right, anything further? All in and all done? Okay, so I'm happy to accept the motion.
All right, I'll move that we approve the application by Bentley Building Corporation for a special permit under section 4221 and 11.6 of the zoning bylaw for a 3,202 square foot two-family dwelling and two detached one-car garage, garages at 116 Conan Street, parcel number 2258-1. Citing all of the findings under 11.6 as we have stated.
Second.
Here's, thank you, Mr. Kindermans, Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Ms. Akersmore?
Aye.
Mr. Smith, aye. Thank you very much, Mr. White. Thank you very much, Mr. White, Mr. Kelly. Appreciate the Ms. Stone, appreciate the time effort you put into this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So as we move to the next issue, which is the Concord Country Club, and then following that is the Sims Times Development and Permitting, I'm just gonna suggest that if people, you know, have any comments about the Zoom format for these meetings and, and how things have been going. Happy to see them sort of offline. You don't have to talk about them tonight, but we will, we'd love to hear how that has been going as we're trying to think about you know, when to go back live and what, what how we would go about that. The next matter, the next two matters, I believe we have closed public hearing on both.
No, we did not close the public hearing for the golf course. You did close the public hearing for the signs, the earth removal project.
Okay.
And town council is here for that, as the board requested for that.
Okay, I thought that we closed the public hearing for Concord Country Club because I thought that we had, there was some, anyway, I don't care. So.
Well, so whether you close the public or hearing or not, the board's not required to take public comment. That's completely different.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, the public comment. I'm sorry, the public.
No, you did, you did close the public comment.
Comment, yes, thank you. Okay, that's where we got.
The public hearing.
All right, I'm a newbie. Come on, give me a break. Public comment. Okay, Concord Country Club. We have been here before. So we have closed the public comment. This is for the board deliberation with respect to this particular project. I'm gonna try to give a little bit of a recap here about where I think we are and if the way the rest of this night is gone, Elizabeth will let me know what we really have done. We, this project began on a very unfortunate step. Quite frankly, for the town and applicant and the neighbors and everywhere else. Because it started out with a violation of the earth removal for failure to get an earth removal permit. Before us is, though, setting that, not setting it aside necessarily, but just trying to get to the heart of the substantive issue. The country club is, is would like to put in a retaining pond, which it would, would help it for purposes of its irrigation of the golf course. After a number of efforts and attempts and reviews by town staff, that retaining pond I think clearly now meets the requirements of not being in the not violating any of the rules of the groundwater conservancy district. It's sufficiently above the water table, et cetera. There've also been a number of discussions with the town staff related to monitoring monitoring facilities with respect to the Jenny Dugan Brook issues in terms of water conservancy and times of drought notifications, et cetera, et cetera. And I understand that the, and we understand from previous meetings that the town staff and the developer have been working together to try to come up with a set of standards that can be applied to any potential permit granted that will address some of these issues to the extent that they've been agreed upon and will have a process for agreement on those issues that still need to be worked out. The third element is that there was a substantial bit of discussion from the neighbors, the Natural Resources Commission and others with respect to the screening that would be that would be put in place here, the landscape plan that would be put in place to try to I, I'll characterize this and somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, but essentially that the, that the this particular area, the golf course was quite screened from the neighbors. The neighborhood previously, there was a lot of trees, et cetera, in between. And the attempt, I think, from at least the Natural Resources Commission, the town's point of view and, and ultimately the golf course was to try to put in a screening plan that was sufficiently dense and sufficiently far up the hill, if you will, to be able to try to replicate most of that screening process. So what's before us tonight is really a discussion about the provisions of the special permit process. And an attempt to see, you know, and to try to come together and, and the earth removal permit. And so I think that what is, what we're looking for here is a discussion about the special permit and the earth removal and and that is essentially where I think this stands. Have I summarized this pretty close to where we are? Okay, Elizabeth hasn't jumped in to correct me, so I'm gonna take that as a yes. Comments and discussions from the board?
Generally, I think this decision gets us where we wanted to be. A couple little questions. This on page, if you don't mind me, just going directly to, I guess this is page two where we say, let's see, paragraph one, two, three, four. Associated Special Permit would not have been required with the current redesign to accomplish the construction of the irrigation pond. Is that true? I mean, can we say that we know how many square feet would have been removed?
There, so with the, with the current redesign, all of the cut and fill is being balanced on site. So the, they, they would have just balanced on site the, the twelve hundred cubic yards that were taken off.
Okay.
So, so under the special, under the earth removal, they're allowed up to any, anybody is allowed up to removal of a thousand cubic yards without a special permit.
To take off? And you're saying they're keeping all of it, the whole twelve hundred staying on site therefore, okay.
Well, well, twelve, twelve hundred cubic yards did go offsite. They're not bringing back twelve hundred cubic yards. The previous project was gonna require somewhere around nineteen thousand cubic yards to be removed. The applicant redesigned the project, so now all cut and fill is being balanced on site.
I see what you're saying. We're taking, making a little leap, assuming that if they had done it this way, they wouldn't have asked to remove that twelve hundred that they would have.
I'm, I'm, I'm confident that they would not have had to remove only twelve hundred cubic yards to accomplish this project. They would have just balanced everything on site.
They, they would have removed one right and kept the additional two hundred.
On site, okay. Something that's potentially ridiculous, but I'm gonna mention anyway, where we talk about the last paragraph, same page three, town's ability to provide adequate water supply for drinking and fire protection. Should that be and or, does it matter?
No, I think it's both, right?
And so, or, I'm saying if it's drinking, there, there later on, we say if we don't have enough for drinking and fire protection. So I'm just saying, should we say for under twenty two, it says maybe negatively affecting the town's ability to provide adequate water supply for drinking and fire protection.
Okay, so you started with page three.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm having the same trouble.
Sorry, because I'm going so fast. Under eleven point six point one, page three, three lines up.
Yep.
For, so town's ability to provide adequate water supply for drinking and fire protection. Later on, we say.
Oh, I'm looking at the, the problem is I'm looking at the revised one.
Oh, I'm not looking at the revised one. There you go.
Yeah, so that's on the, it's on the top of page four. Sorry.
So we make the point drinking and fire protection. I'm just wondering about putting the word or there and on mine, it's under twenty two. If it's determined that pumping of one or both irrigation wells may be negatively affecting, you know, it's just the word or. I don't know why it struck me both places. It may be totally irrelevant, but. And other than that, I don't have anything at the moment. No, I think it's good.
So from the draft revision one document that the board received, there is one additional change to condition twenty. After speaking with the Natural Resources Director, she wasn't available till, of course, after I sent this out. The draft you have says October fifteenth to April fifteenth for mowing. The current standard that they use is November fifteenth to April fifteenth, but she said she understands you know, the, the maintenance at the golf course and agreed to have it be November first to April fifteenth.
Any other comments, Theo, anyone else? I see a hand raised.
Couple quick ones.
Oh yeah, sorry, Robbie, go ahead.
Sure. You know, one is, I know we talked a lot about the monitoring well as a benefit, so you better understand impact to the town's water supply and you know, I, I see that in the discussion. And in the conditions, I wonder if it's worth just citing it as, you know, we list the benefits to the town under eleven point six point one. You know, we, we mentioned the drought management plan. But it might be worth calling out the monitoring well there.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a really good change.
And then a question on the conditions, you know, I, I've seen in other contexts where you know, there's a development and there's some landscaping that's supposed to be done will require a bond until the landscaping work is completed. I didn't see that here. I don't know if there was reasoning behind why it doesn't apply.
So a, a bond would not be required unless the applicant gets to a point where they're finished with the entire project. But weather does not allow them to install the landscaping, then we would require a performance bond at that point. But.
That is in there.
Yeah, so that's yeah, so yeah, condition fourteen. So prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the pump house, they will have to complete all the landscaping.
Oh, we may require.
Yeah, if the lands, let's say the, you know, they finish this in November and want to hurry up and get the irrigation pond filled. You can't do this type, this level of planting in November, so they would have to provide a performance bond to cover the cost of the landscaping, the, the work and all of that until they could do it in the spring.
Thanks, no, that's helpful. That was my question.
Okay, I know Mr. Swaim has, has recused himself from this one, so others. I Mr. or Jack or Judy's got Nikki, I see a hand raised.
So the, the board has closed public comment?
I understand that. I'm just gonna ask them if they have a point of order here. Yes, no? All right. So are we at a point of, appreciate everybody's hard work on this. This draft, I think it really provides in great detail a good discussion of, of what has gone into this. I, I do I will say that it was, this has been a rocky road and I would hope very much that you know, this is, serves as an indication of how difficult these processes can be. If you if applicants don't pay attention to the rules of the road at the beginning. And I think it's just really important. Particularly, as I've said before, I think the institutions of the, of the of the cult, the cultural and athletic and whatever institutions of the town who benefit from the town and who the town benefits from, you know, bear a particular responsibility in this and I you know, appreciate where we're going on this and I wholly support it, but I just think that we, it, it could have been handled better, to be blunt. All right.
Yep.
Anything further? And if not, happy to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for the Concord Tree Club for a private recreation facility on the sections four point one point six, seven point five and eleven point six of the zoning bylaw for the previous removal of twelve hundred cubic yards of earth without approval and the construction of an irrigation and pump house at two forty six Old Road nine acre corner parcel thirty seventy nine.
So you'd be adopting the decision as set forth here with, with a couple of minor comments, right?
Correct, adopting, yeah.
Second.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Ms. Akers Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Smith, hi. Thank you all very much. It's been a long road. May get longer, who knows, let's see. Elizabeth, you, you will connect with me. I don't know if the fact that I'm remote, is that gonna be an issue for signing anything or?
No. Finds the decision.
Perfect.
I'll be, I'll be seeing ahead tomorrow at ten o'clock.
Okay, excellent. All right. Thank you all. Thank you for all for the, for their participation in this particular process. All right, next item. Go to sorry, I'm getting my agenda. Sims Development and Permitting LLC for a special permit under section seven point five and eleven point six of the zoning bylaw for the construction of a definitive subdivision requiring the removal of sixty thousand six hundred and ninety cubic yards of earth at one forty six B and one fourteen forty two Main Street and one ten and eleven B Highland Street in several parcels. So I'm not sure I'm getting the public comment and the public hearings right, so this is clearly a public hearing. So I'm not sure I'm getting the public comment and the public hearings right. So this is clearly a public hearing and the public comment is open and closed.
Yeah, so the board actually closed the public hearing at your last last meeting and continued this item to this meeting for deliberation and to have town council who is here to have the board deliberate over on their decision.
Okay, and this town council, I'm not seeing him. Oh, there you are. Mr. Macarius, thank you very much for attending. All right, so. I'm gonna beg the board's attention to do a quick little summary here of where I think we are. And again, let me know if I'm not where we think we are. The the applicant here has an approved subdivision that was granted by the planning board under its rules and regulations and under the subdivision law. It goes to the issue of laying out of street utilities, et cetera. And and lot size and area. The that, as I understand it, approving the subdivision was not appropriate to make the approval of the subdivision contingent upon the earth removal bylaw. Because the earth removal bylaw and which is a matter for the zoning board of appeals as opposed to the planning board is a separate item. So we have been working for a number of months here with respect to the earth removal bylaw. The standards we've all talked about under the earth removal bylaw require three particular findings or three particular issues. First, that the volume proposed for the removal does not exceed the minimum practical removal required to accomplish the construction development or improvement in accordance with the plans, therefore. Secondly, that the plans submitted in connection with the removal are designed to minimize changes in existing contours to exchange and to enhance attractive land utilization, effective drainage, suitable road gradients, access and other design considerations. And third, that the affecting the removal will not be detrimental or injurious to a butters in the neighborhood either by the alteration of existing topography or by substantial change in the use of the streets of the neighborhood. I'm gonna suggest to a certain extent that we might want to take those three items in turn and talk about each of them going forward as opposed to trying to sort of jump all over the map. But I I'm sure that there's a lot of interconnected here. And that will do that. I also recognize that that this is specifically about earth removal and to power and the changes in topography that would be as consequence of earth removal. It doesn't, you know, necessarily go to, we certainly, just as the planning board couldn't condition the subdivision approval on on the earth removal permit. I mean, I this is not, we're not trying to relitigate the question of the subdivision approval itself. I think the focus is pretty much on the on the earth removal bylaw here, and that's the permit that's before us. I don't know, yes, if Mr. Macarius, if you would had any other opening comments about, you know, the focus of our attention here tonight, after you've had a chance to look at this record. Or if other members of the board would have a different idea about how to proceed, but in thinking about this, I I kind of think it'd be helpful if we just take the three items elements in turn.
Mr. Chair, I I think you described it exactly like I would, so nothing further from me.
Yeah, and 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 Jim, I I like the way that, you know, just going point by point here, because I was. There was a lot of stuff here, and I think trying to dissect it would be would be very, very good and going point by point.
I agree.
Okay. So the first issue, I think, is the is then the volume does not exceed the minimum practical removal to accomplish the construction development improvement in accordance with the plans, therefore. I I'll start out and say that I have struggled with this because we we had a bit of a back and forth with respect to our peer reviewer and the developer related to the this idea of minimum practical removal. The initial the initial peer review suggested that there was not a that they believed that 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 standard had not been essentially met, that you could have done less removal, just to be to try to put that some kind of context. And then there was an interchange with the applicant who said that that if one assumed that the plans here that was the plans being referred to in seven point five point three point one was the plans to build houses of a certain height. You know, within the bylaws, but certainly within the height requirements of the zoning bylaws that the, if you wanted to build a house of that height, the the that the amount of earth that was suggested to be removed was the minimum amount. And I think our peer reviewer came back and suggested that, based on that set of facts, that the plans included building homes of a certain height that that they were willing to say that a minimum had been done. I have struggled, and I'm just gonna raise this point, and then maybe we can talk about and maybe town council can help us, but I've really struggled mightily with the notion that a subdivision approval, which is a street and lots, would necessarily assume that the builder would then or anyone who puts a house on the lot, because remember, a subdivision could simply be the street laid out. The street laid out, the utilities put in, and then the lot sold individually. So any any person who was building a house there would necessarily always have to have the right to build something of a certain height. It seems to me that we've had subdivisions in town that have resulted in single, you know, and in single story homes or story and a half homes or things like that that would not necessarily have to be this height. So my my first struggle with respect to this is that I I think that I I don't know that I can find myself agreeing with the peer reviewer that that there isn't more, less earth removal that could have occurred in this particular case. But anyway, that's that's where I'm running on this particular one, and if happy to hear discussion about that aspect or others in this in this issue of the minimum removal.
Jim, I, oh, sorry, go ahead, Tom. I was, I'm interested to hear what town council has to say. I'm not.
Well, this may go to the town council. If you take the literal language of five, seven, five, three, one. Do we have any authority to object to the plan? Because I could read that section to say, we don't have the authority to object to that plan. And if that's the plan, then that has to tie into does the earth removal called for by that plan exceed something that's practical? So are you suggesting, Jim, that we might have a basis to argue about the plan?
Because I have. Suggesting, I'm not sure what the plan is. If the plan here is the subdivision plan, which would allow you to build houses, maybe not all of two stories at the maximum height, but but maybe allow you to still build houses. Or are or is the plan the particular applicant's plan for exactly what they want to do with this particular site? And and so maybe I've said just what you've said. I I'm not sure.
Well, you've been you, the board has been working on this longer than I have, as you know, obviously, I'm new to it. But I have looked at everything and you have before you the plan that the developer intends to construct to, if I understand what he's presented.
Yes, but it's a but we also, but the plan, I'll let town council jump in. I I'd say the contrary to that is is that what he's got is a subdivision and he's got the right under the subdivision to put in a street and those and those particular to to put in the street and that layout those lots and then to sell those lots individually to people to build whatever they want to build on them. This is not like a PRD where, you know, he's locked into a particular into a particular house plan or house design or anything else. You could you could go. I don't think that there's a there's any requirement here that he could go in and build something else as as long his only issue is is that he wants to be able to build a house on each lot. He would like to be able to build a house at the maximum height. Is effectively what I'm gathering. And then I think you're right, Tom. I think that's the question. The plan is to be able to build a house at or near the maximum height requirement on each lot without having to come to the board for any sort of these sort of a special permit. Excuse me. I don't want to use the word variance cut for Ben.
Jim, if this is an appropriate time, I I can weigh in here. I think this is from a legal perspective, exactly the the question, kind of the hardest question here. The plan is a subdivision plan. That's what was approved. And as Jim pointed out, that has to do that that provides for the layout of roads and utilities. It doesn't get into the building profiles like you might, again, PRD is a good counter example. The crux of the dispute, as I read it, in between the peer reviewer and the applicant initially was whether the roadway raid could be altered in to minimize the amount of soil being removed, basically, if so much soil had to be removed. And the back and forth, the letters that you you that are in the record that I've reviewed from June to July seems to focus on, well, we can't change the roadway, applicant says, because if we did, that would cause us to have to change the height of buildings. And so that I think the question for the board which requires some interpretation of the bylaw is do you, you know, is the amount of removal being conducted, being minimized to the extent needed to build the roadways and utilities needed for the project? It is true that you don't have a say at this moment to say, well, we wish you would do smaller buildings. The reality is, we don't know exactly what kind of buildings go on. There haven't been building permits pulled, as far as I know. And there there isn't an absolute, there there are two different processes. The subdivision control law doesn't grant to maximum height. It doesn't restrict height in this case. So you could reasonably find that it's not minimized because the plan could differ. But I think that would get into our is is the roadway, the soil removal for the roadway as little as it could be roadway and utilities. I'm using that more broadly.
Thank you, Mr. Macarius. Other questions? I mean, I'm happy to go like these three and then kind of circle back and try to pull a decision together. So I don't I don't think we have to necessarily drive this to a complete conclusion. I just wanted to help focus our discussions.
Is the layout of the road that's approved in the subdivision plan include the gradient? Or is it just where it goes?
No. It it would, it would include the the topography, the gradient as well, all the grading of this. Would you see?
Is that true? Is that right?
Yeah.
I'm not. I'm not sure.
Question.
Your question, Robbie.
Does the is the, I think the question was, is that subdivision that was approved approved by the planning board, does it include all of the exact location which would of this road, which would include all of the earth removal at this stage? So in other words, it was approved at a particular gradient. I think that my understanding, Robbie, was that the planning board was very clear to make sure that they understood that they were not approving the earth removal permit. They were not trying to grant the earth removal permit, but I'm not sure what the if the if the if the plan, the subdivision plan actually assumes a particular topography.
So the subdivision plan did not assume a a particular topography. The subdivision plan, the applicant did not request any waivers to the subdivision rules and regs. So the layout of the road, the construction of the road, the percent slopes of the road are they they followed the subdivision rules and regs. There were no waivers granted to, let's say, the percent slope of a road. So it it's not that the subdivision, you know, takes into consideration of the topography. It 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 didn't. It took into consideration only the design, construction standards under the subdivision rules and regs.
One of the the definitive street plan, definitive street to pocket topographic plan that's that's been approved shows the grading of the road and and they and so for just the the subdivision plan shows not just the road and the lots in in a sort of in in flat line work, but it also gives an approval to the grades in the road as they, because they need to follow the rules and regs, right? And and current as the topography currently is, you couldn't put that road in following the roads and regs. You need to do quite a bit of earthwork to get that road in.
So I don't know. The issue is is that that particular one showed a road that met the topography. But.
But it was proposed, proposed topography. It didn't.
Right, the proposed, right. Okay. Thank you. That's a good question, Robbie. Any other issues on on the first criteria? So just moving on to the second criteria, it's the plan submitted in connection with a removal designed to minimize changes in existing contours, enhance attractive land utilization, affect range, suitable road gradients, access or other design considerations. So I think that maybe Theo's comment on the last section is is probably right in the sense that and Elizabeth Hughes is that the the plan does, the plan as submitted does deal with drainage, road gradients, access, et cetera, and does so within a way that is consistent with the town sub the or with the subdivision bylaw in terms of the requirements with respect to that. So maybe what we should be looking at here is the question of attractive land utilization and to and minimizing changes to existing contours.
But does the wording of this section? Because it says the plans are designed to do this. Does this seem to open the possibility that here we could have a say on what the plans are?
Because we. Yeah, I mean.
Plans aren't that, then.
Also, sorry, can I go back? Jim, are you, the the first point, are you now convinced that we don't have any? Okay, so on the first point, even though they were submitted, we're not saying that those grades were officially part of the subdivision approval as.
I was, I think I was suggesting that, yes, I I'm not personally convinced. I was saying that I I I think that I'm trying to just kind of go through the three and then maybe circle back and try to figure out where we are told.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I guess I'm confused now because Theo says that they were submitted. We're saying that they were submitted as part of the. Subdivision approval. Theo, is that?
The gradients were submitted, yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and Robbie's question was, was it just where the roads went without the gradients, right, Robbie? Just was it the path of the roads? So where does that leave us with being able to? Say that it was minimized, the earth removal is minimized according to what now, according to where a road could go in? But it, are we saying that the gradients and everything are already established? So it's the minimum to get to those for every lot?
I think that the gradients that they have to meet are the gradients with respect to. The to to meet the subdivision by law. In terms of what or our bylaws, at least in terms of what road gradients have to be. So they didn't, as Elizabeth Hughes said, they didn't ask for any variances from that. I'm not sure that.
Yes, the applicant did not request any waivers to the subdivision construction standards. Provide standards for the percent slope of a road.
Okay.
So the the subdivision plans, part of the application submission, they're required to provide a road profile. Which shows the existing topography and then the the road at a profile and. And the percent slope of that road at that profile and and the change in topography.
Okay, so there's no real bearing on on the what you have to remove to get there.
The the planning board did not take into consideration the. Earth removal required to get to. What the applicant was proposing as far as the percent slopes of the roads.
But the.
But it certainly.
Were approved.
Right.
So then the so. So the applicant designed a subdivision plan that met the requirements of the current subdivision rules and regulations. So the applicant did not request any waivers to those construction standards. Would oh. I can't speak to, you know, I'm not an engineer. The planning board did not have an alternative plan to look at whether. A change in the percent slopes would have. Changed the subdivision plan. So I can't, I can't speak to that.
Okay.
It goes to the the murkiness, I think, of the issue, what the plan really is.
Exactly.
How you how you really deal with it.
Okay, sorry, Jim, you can keep going.
No, 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 that's perfectly acceptable. So I think going to the second one is really the now this. I I think I might turn to Mr. Macarius in terms of this this item because. I I do, I do find it a little bit, I mean, both. The first thing that we looked at seven, five, three, one, and this seven, five, three, two. Refer to plans and refer to minimization. One minimizing changes in existing contours and the second one to to enhance attractive land utilization. The first one minimizing practical. Removal to require or accomplish the construction. So. I am struggling a little bit with what our standards, if the standard, how those standards vary in terms of what we're supposed to be. Connecting with there.
Sure. So this is where I think regardless of sort of how you read. Number one of exactly what the plans are. Which is which is admittedly difficult to do in the subdivision context, given that plans are not everything or not for everything. In this one, you are looking at the proposal as a proposal. Again, only with respect to contours. It's not whether you think it will. Lead to the best housing design or or, you know, the all of the benefits that you might, for for instance, again, in sort of something like a PRD or a regular or another special permit. But at least with respect to contours, whether. The design of the project as a whole. Is meeting the standard that it is minimizing changes in existing contours. With the purpose of enhancing. You know, the the four or five list of things here, utilize land of attractive land utilization, drainage, suitable road gradients, access or other considerations. Most of those issues were not things that the that the planning board had to have any. Weighing in on the one that that does come before for subdivisions that. You probably don't need to spend a lot of time on is access. It doesn't sound like there's any access issues here. But the the questions regarding attractive land utilization, there may be questions about drainage. And the suitable road gradients are a little bit different. And I would say those those are sort of more in your in your purview at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Macarius. So questions, comments, thoughts on this from the board?
This, 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 this is the one I have the most, I struggle with the most. Because it says that the plans submitted. Are designed to minimize changes in contours and enhance. Attractive land utilization. I'm, you know, that this leads you to believe that that would be a goal of the plan submitted to make. To do something attractive to minimize. To minimize. Where whereas I think, you know, the plan submitted, I think the goal of them was to. Well, I don't think that was the goal that that. Drove the design of these plans.
Thank you. Other questions? I do think, well, as I thinking, it does seem that, and maybe I'll just ask this question, Tom counsel, is that this is this is more qualitative? If you will, in terms of, as opposed to maybe the first first one was a little bit more technical. But qualitative in the sense that, and I think I think Theo, you've hit it right on the head, which is that. I don't know that I think that there was considerable discussion in the record. About whether. That the changes here were such that they would minimize change in the existing contours. Or an attract enhance the attractiveness of the land utilization. And. I think that the record is sort of replete with concerns and comments from. The the neighborhood staff and others with respect to whether or not. There was sufficient attention paid. To that element of what was going on in in the plan to justify. The meeting of this burden that they the applicant carries with respect to the second issue. I certainly think that I certainly would tend to agree with Theo that. There are a lot of motivations here with respect to these plans. I'm not sure that. That one that we have seen in the record. A significant amount of discussion by the applicant about enhancing the attractiveness of the land. There has been some, I'm not saying there's none. But I think that there's been considerable discussion in the record about concern that. That this that these plans are to the detriment of the. Land utilization here. Anything more on this comment? I here looks like you were about to say something, Elizabeth.
And no, I agree with what you're saying. And I'm I'm just going back over some of the applicant's responses to the peer review. I mean, and they specifically say raising the road profile would create a condition such that a two story structure cannot be built. I mean, it's clearly this is what they're they've emphasized is how much they can build and how high they can build and how much they can build. I don't see anything about. Meeting these standards about considering the. Maybe to a certain extent, but I think it's pretty clear on the record as well, what what considerations were taken into account.
Okay. So let's.
Yes, go for it. The town council may have a case or two that would help us on this one. Is it within our authority to say, look, you can't take away? That kind of cubic yardage because it will indeed change the contours, etc. The minute that we make that decision, then that will require a change in the plans. Instead of whatever it is, 16 units or 12, whatever the number of units. That will now, I think of necessity, will be putting us in the spot of saying, you've got to change your plan. Now, that may be okay, but I'd be curious if you and or any or Elizabeth, anybody on the board or town council has any reaction to that concern.
I'll let town council. Speak in one second, and I would say I I. I'm pretty adamant of the notion that. That. A person who has a subdivision does not have the right to build anything there that they want to build. That, you know, that you do have to. You do have to take into account the rest of the rules and regulations, including, in this case, the earth removal by law. But it would be just as easy to have to take into account the zone, the wetlands. Requirements and say that, of course, I can't necessarily build a house of a certain size or a certain place in the in the thing because I would be. Encroaching on a wetlands or I'd have to have a special permit and then you'd be back in that situation. So I. I really don't think that the fact that the applicant desires to build a certain size house on these lots is. I don't feel like that the that the term plans in this case. Can mean can go so far as to mean that we have to sort of. Allow that to occur because that's really what the zoning by law is always about. You know, and the wetlands by laws and everything is about is that you can't build under certain certain circumstances. And. It is well the case, I think, that that on a regular lot. That that has the right area and all that. And is not on a wetlands and is not whatever that you can build a house that meets the setback rules, that meets the FAR regulations and is of a certain height. You can absolutely do that. And we don't have in this town or many other towns, the right to suggest that it's. You know, really attractive or it's ugly or whatever it is. I mean, you get to do what you want to do. But in this case, I think. The question is, is that can you build whatever you want? On, you know, if you don't, if you are. If to do so would require us to sort of require us to give a permit under the. Earth removal. And I I think that can't be the case either. I mean, we wouldn't be sitting here with a permit requirement if. If we said, oh, if you build a subdivision. If you put in a subdivision, then you must agree to the earth removal permit. So I think that we have, as a board, we have. The obligation on behalf of the town to look at. Whether the these issues, what regard and recognize that if we if we go against the. If we both know that the person would have by necessary necessarily have to change his plans. Her plans.
Yeah, I certainly agree. You could always have a plan that can't be built for one reason or another. And if and and here, the reason may be that the the earth removal doesn't meet the the bylaw standards.
Mr. Macarius, anything to add there?
Not a whole lot. I think to Mr. Swaim's question, that's that's exactly the. The the issue that comes up in a lot of these more complicated projects is that there'll be a series of permits that one needs to obtain to do them. You may, you may be stopped from using your full buildable area because of because of wetlands, excuse me.
Thought that was me for a second.
I know it's it's trying to shut the phone and the watch and the computer off at the same time. In any events, my apologies. Because of wetland, because of a building code that maybe you could otherwise build to an air to a height, but it wouldn't be structurally sound. So. There are always other limitations. The fact that the the town meeting and. Put in the zoning by law, this particular provision as a separate piece is important. I would also point out that in the state court. Litigation regarding the subdivision approval. One of the, as I think Mr. Smith started off at the beginning, one of the conditions that was struck. At the applicant that at times. Request in their in their complaint is the condition that you grant this permit before the subdivision is endorsed. And part of the argument there that they prevailed on and the town did not appeal is that those are separate conditions. Separate processes, and there is case law in the subdivision context that you can't rely on unrelated sort of pieces of zoning. You can strike down based on things like lack of frontage or setbacks for for a lot like lack of. Lot size, but the court felt that this was enough of a different requirement. And so I think that logic flows to the conclusion for me that. This is a different piece and doesn't require you to 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 interpret it to give the maximum buildable size.
Other. Questions? So I think that that turns us moves us to the third issue, which. Is the the removal will not be detrimental or injurious to a butters or the neighborhood used by the alteration of existing topography or substantial change in the use of streets of the neighborhood. So. I'm I'm gonna throw it open very quickly. I would say that the record. Of comment, public comment went mostly, I think, to this issue, and I would categorize it in two pieces. There were a lot of public comment regarding whether or not there was injury, if you will, caused on a. On a on a short to medium term basis by the simple fact that there's just all this earth removal activity. And there's all the trucks going through town. There were comments by some neighbors with respect to the environmental impact of the earth removal process on. Persons who had compromised. Immune systems, etc. And so I think there's a whole group of that sort of piece of this that that goes to. You know, time of day that people are moving the earth, etc., etc. And and as as good or bad as those things may be, or whatever the plans were, eventually that would be over. And there would be no more earth removal and there would be no more trucks and there would be no more anything else. And so this would be going, that would be done. The second set of comments that I was heard going through the record were on more long term effects that the. The long term effects of the. The 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 berm, I'll call it, it's probably the wrong geologic term, but. The the hill in the back that protects the neighborhood from the. The. Pollution and and. Noise effects of the train going through. The basic contours of the, you know, the change in the basic contours of the neighborhood and how how that. Neighborhood is is viewed. And I and just stopped, I'll stop there for just by saying that those are obviously long term. I mean, once that, once the. Once you take all of this dirt out and all of the trucks and everything stop, you're going to be left. With a different topography in that area. And I think that item three here goes. Probably to both, but my my understanding from some research that I've done suggests that. The courts are more would would be more worried, as they should, I suppose, about long term effects than. Short term effects. short-term effects, recognizing that perhaps you can minimize some of the short-term effects, but eventually they'll be over. So that's, that's my table setting for that one.
Jim, I actually think that it contemplates both long and short term because it says the detriment or injury is either by the alteration of topography, which that's, I think that goes to long-term, the hill's gone, or by a substantial change in the use of the streets, which is necessarily going to be short-term because no earth removal goes on, definitely. So I, I, I think that it does the ability to look at both the long and the short-term effects.
Oh, I agree.
And, you know, the, the only thing I'd add is, I think there were comments about environmental impacts and neighborhood character as well, that maybe fit more under the, you know, 11.6 factors, but, but I think are relevant here in, in kind of what is the detriment or injury that's, that's flowing from, you know, both the short and long-term effects.
Yeah, it's a really good point about 11.6, which is obviously part of this, our approval. I, I, I think I read 11.6 as, as being very, very, very close, at least to 7.5.3.3 in terms of the effect on the neighborhood. So I'm sort of considering them together, but it may well be that we should be doing it separately. I don't know.
No, I, I agree that it's, it's sort of the same analysis on, but I, I did want to mention the environmental factors are specifically called on 1.6, but I agree, they, they, they go to this analysis here too.
Great, thank you. Others? CEO, I mean, you've sat through a lot of these discussions. I mean, what's your, what's your take in terms of the, this, this one seems to move it out of a bit of the plan issue and more into just what do we think it's going to do to the, to the neighborhood as a general rule? So, and given your background, would be interested to hear your thoughts.
Well, I wasn't even, even, even thinking about my background, right? It's like, you know, you, you, you just mentioned that the tremendous amount of neighborhood input that we've had. And, and they were all, you know, not positive for this, this plan. And in, in other decisions we had, we had, we've listened to the neighbors a lot. And not that we always follow what, what they say, but they, we let them decide almost what the neighborhood character is. Because it's, because they live it every day and they, they, they want to set their neighborhood. And so I'm, I'm, you know, I think they will be the best judge of, of what neighborhood character is. And, and, yeah, I don't know whether I can express it any, any, any different, but you know, it's, it's the, the neighbors make the neighborhood and they were pretty clear here, so.
Perfect, thank you. Elizabeth or Robbie?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think the neighbors do make the neighborhood, but I think also here clearly the physical alteration of this land is definitely affects the neighborhood in ways that we can't underestimate in what you said about the pollution and up against the railway. And so my concern was, I think, Jim, your concern for your issue at the beginning is what is the plan? I like that we've gotten out of that into some more nebulous kind of subjective reasoning. And I do totally buy the fact that why are we even here discussing this permit if it's just a by right permit? Just because they've gotten a subdivision? I, I guess I just don't buy that. So that's where I am.
I'll, I'll offer, my personal thought is, is that, and, and part of this is, as I, I mentioned in other meetings, and I think it may be even mentioned during the public hearing here, but I certainly have talked about it before, is that I sort, I live, I live a bit behind the large berm that protects, and I'll use that term advisedly, protects my home from the street traffic on Lexington Road. And it is, I'm not a engineer or anything else. It is stunning, the level of noise that is taken out by a huge amount of dirt. And I think that of all of the comments that have been made here, that this, I think this entire neighborhood is dependent upon the earth that, that, the, the earth, the lowered railroad track and the earth that separates that railroad track from the neighborhood to reduce, substantially reduce the noise that's created from these trains. I used to live in West Concord in a place that was not far from the train I've, and also was somewhat protected by that. Yes, you can hear the train. Yes, you can, you, you know, but it doesn't, it doesn't rumble by in the way that it does if you're standing right next to it. And so I do think, personally, I think that the, the thing that is the most, that I was found most compelling in the discussions on the long-term effects was the, the extent to which you will sort of remove that barrier from, from the train. There's a lot of topography changes as well, but you really are going to remove that barrier. And I think that that is a substantial impact on the neighborhood. And I think that it's very hard to say that this plan is not detrimental or injurious to the butters of the neighborhood as, for that reason perhaps alone. To Robbie's point, I don't want to minimize at all the short-term impact of this. It is going to be very significant. This is a huge amount of soil. That's going to be a lot of trucks and a lot of roads and a lot of noise for a period of time, several months. And I don't, I, and I also think, I think that if, I think that it would be, I think that the neighbors have made, made it very clear, those issues. I think those issues have come out very well. I think that if we, I think that if the neighbors in the neighborhood and everything thought that the end product here was going to enhance the neighborhood, that we could have had a lot more focus, we, we would be probably focusing more on the specific plans for the removal because as, as a way to try to minimize some of that, some of that impact, but I don't. But, and so I do think that we have not had as much discussion as we might otherwise have had on the ways to specifically minimize the short-term impact because I think we've all been focusing on, we've been focusing a lot of our attention on the long-term impact. And, and if you're not going to, you're not going to take down the hill, if you, if you're not going to prove the taking down the hill, then, you know, it becomes less of an issue as to what the mechanics were if you, if you had approved it. So I, so that, thank you very much for that exercise. I mean, I, I guess, Elizabeth Hughes, I'd love to hear, or Ray, if you have any thoughts in terms of the way we should be thinking about this or things that we're not thinking about here in terms of, of this discussion. And then I'll circle back and ask broadly for the, kind of the overall, try to get to an overall decision.
I do not have anything to add to the board's discussion.
So, so thank you for that. So I think that what we would be doing here from now to the end of this discussion is that we would be coming up with a, I'm, I'm sure we can have a vote or whatever, but that the decision, similar to the concrete country club decision, that what we would be doing here is coming up with a vote and some reasons. And then we would be continuing this discussion to allow the town staff and the town council to assist us in drafting a, a, a formal decision that we could then vote on at the next meeting. Is that what you envision?
Correct.
All right, general thoughts?
Mr. Chair, can I, before you do, I just want to remind you, a lot of what you've said is also particular to the 11 factor. But it may be worthwhile, if you're going to have a decision, to just also briefly talk about those. Not to drag this on, but just, just so that you've considered those, those six factors briefly.
The 11.6 factors, sure. Happy to do that. Cause it's only 620 where I am.
Forgot about that. Well played there, Jim, well played.
I, I do have dinner plans tonight, so I won't hold you much past midnight, no. Yeah, so the six factors and 11.6, to be clear, impacts on the economic or community needs probably in, in a underscore here, in, in this particular case of community. Traffic flow and safety concerns, including parking and loading. And I think that goes directly to the comments that Robbie made earlier about the 7.5.3.3 and the substantial change to the use of streets that, that some of the traffic flow and safety concerns really is, is a, is in part based directly on the procedures for removing the earth. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, I think, is probably not one that we're going to spend a lot of time with. 6.4 is impacts on the neighborhood character, which I think is very similar to 7.5.3.3. Impacts on the natural environment, which is certainly the same as 7.5.3.3. You know, specifically goes to the photography issue. And the last one, is the last one. This is and, and I go to another page and I don't even have a page. Oh, the fiscal impacts, excuse me, fiscal impacts, including impacts on town services and tax base and employment. I have to say that Elizabeth Hughes tells me we're reformatting the town bylaw. We obviously could use one, a reformatting, because I couldn't figure out what that meant. But anyway, fiscal impacts on town services. Now, I suspect that there is some impact in particular on town services in the, during the removal phase. Because there's a lot of trucks, a lot of traffic, and I suspect there's some issues there as well.
And, and, and some impacts on the tax base, but you know, having a lot of larger, single-family homes.
I would caution us though, if we're reading this just under the earth removal, right? I mean, when we're talking about 11.6.
Yeah, i- i- if I could weigh in, Mr. Chair, that, that's, that's an important note that was just made. This is really just for the earth removal. I, I don't think this is one of your larger factors. I think you're looking more at really the, the middle ones, four, five, and, and, and to some degree, one and two. Certainly.
Yep.
No, I understand. Yep, that's, that's why you're a legal mind and I'm not.
The only, the only item I would add under that is a comment that the engineering division has brought up about the potential impact to Main Street with that amount of truck traffic. The, the physical, the roadway itself, the construction.
So this is the, this is the, this is the, if you run that many trucks down Main Street for several months, that you go to the care, care, that can, the, the durability of Main Street effectively.
Correct.
Correct. Good point. So Mr. Macarius, do, is that, is it sufficient for us here to have, you know, recognize that, you know, we feel like we have had a lot of these discussions that, that go to these issues in connection with the earth, earth removal and not have to repeat them? Or would you suggest that we?
No, I, I think that's, that's, I think you referenced how they might connect as you were going through the list, Mr. Chair. And I think that is, unless others on the board disagree that those connections made sense as they heard it, that gives Elizabeth and our team enough guidance in drafting something if that's the basis for it.
So I think we've come after all these months and weeks and whatever to, a, a time for decision with respect to this. I, I'm, I'm sensing from the board's discussion to this point that there is substantial concern. First, there, I think there is a recognition that we cannot and should not be in a position or do not have to be in a position where we must grant this earth removal because there is a subdivision plan, that these are really separate items and that we need to judge them separately. And that whatever the term plan means under this bylaw, it cannot mean so much that it would suggest that we have no ability to do anything under this bylaw except, except agree to the plan that has been put forward. I am hearing basically that we are very concerned whether it's under 7.5.3.1 or 7.5.3.2, that the applicant here has not demonstrated a, a, a plan, an earth removal, earth removal program here that is designed to minimize changes to existing, particularly as to 7.5.3.2, designed to minimize changes in existing contours in order to attack and enhance attractive land utilization. And that, quite to the contrary, there is a lot of concern and there's a lot of statements in the record and evidence in the record supporting the notion that there is that this is not a plan, this is not a proposal that seeks to adequately minimize the changes in existing contours. I'm also hearing that, that the standard in 7.5.3, which is a plan that would not be detrimental, that, you know, that the applicant has to demonstrate that it's a plan that will not be detrimental, injurious to the butters of the neighborhood, is a standard which this particular plan has not met based on both short-term issues related to the amount of earth to be removed, the impact on Main Street, the impact on the environment of the neighborhood during the, during the earth removal process and during the, and all of the trucks and so forth that would be associated with that. And at least in my particular view, more importantly, the long-term impact where the contours of this particular land are important in, in providing a certain character to the neighborhood in terms of its overall character, but also and, and specifically in terms of its relationship to the railroad. I think that railroad's been there for a lot of years. And, and, and that, you know, doing this earth removal or removing this amount of earth would quite clearly be detrimental and injurious to the butters by reason of the alteration of the topography. And that I don't see that there are Um, and that I don't see that there are any real mitigating factors. Um, I recognize that this is property and that people want to be able to build on property. They want to make economic use of property. Um, but I do think that, um, these bylaws do provide us. Um, with standards that have to be met for that purpose. And it, it just does not seem to me that the, the applicant here has, um, uh, met those standards.
Oh, that was very well said, Jim. I, um. Yeah, very, very well said, um.
Yeah, I, I agree with all that, um, and you know, just to sort of add the, the overlay of the eleven point six factors. Uh, as I go through those, I, I do find a lot of adverse impacts in the record that go to those specific factors. Uh, and, and weighing those against, uh, any of the benefits that have been put forward. Uh, I see the adverse impact as, uh, as weighing more heavily.
I agree.
Okay, um, let's, uh. I think so, so what, um, I'm, I guess I'm going to call for a motion on this, um, with the understanding that. That it will incorporate the reasons that we've set forth here, but that, um, we are asking staff and town council to assist us in. Uh, capturing the comments that we've made here this evening and to, um, provide a, uh, written decision. That we will be able to, um, formally adopt at a, at our next meeting.
Would the motion be to continue this discussion till our next hearing? So we can, what we did today with the country club, same thing.
Um, I'll defer to, to Nina, but.
What I'm saying is last time you said we would continue and we got the decision and then we voted.
So you, you can do that. I think Nina and I have a clear understanding of the, um, direction that the board wishes to go, so. Nina.
Oh, you mean so that we could continue and continue now and then just see it, this, a draft decision and make our formal vote next week, next month? That's what you were asking about? That's, I'm perfectly happy with that. That makes. It makes certain amount of sense in the sense that there, if there's anything that we see when we see it in paper that would, that would alter that. We could certainly, that, that certainly seems fair. But also I think it makes it more clear that as the, as of the date of our decision. Which I suspect probably has impact about when people have to make other sorts of, uh, decisions. And the app and others would have to make other decisions, so. Nina, are you okay with that? That works for you?
I'm okay. It sounds like that's the process you just took to, and, and I'm fine with the consistency there.
Great, so, um, Jim, you're looking for a motion to continue to our September ninth meeting at, we have seven oh five, Elizabeth?
Sure.
Yep. So I so move.
I second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kindermans.
Aye.
Ms. Akers Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Smith, aye. Alright, thank you. Specifically thank you, uh, Mr. Macarius, uh, for sitting in on this. And for the, um, efforts that you've taken to, uh, review, uh, the record. And, uh, for the efforts that you're going to be taking in the next few days to pull together decision. It would be, um. It's, it's always, I, I, I hate to do this to people because it's already the 12th of August and the ninth of, um. Uh, September is when the ninth of September is, but, um. I'm just particularly mindful of the fact that. Um, that Monday is Labor Day and Tuesday and Wednesday are the first two days of Rosh Shana. Um, and so if we can do everything possible to have a draft decision in that week before, that would really be. Um, helpful and I think try to be respectful of, of people's time in terms of the holidays as well as, um, Labor Day.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Are we still needs to the minutes?
Oh, sure.
Cause I don't want to get off right now. I'm just kidding. I do want to get off this call, but.
Thank you all.
Good night. So the only other item that we have on the agenda tonight, um, is the minutes of, I don't know what the minutes are. June 10th?
Yep.
Ju- June 10th, okay.
I have June 10th, yep.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, thoughts? Motions?
I move that we approve the minutes of June 10th.
Yeah, I second that one.
Uh, Mr. Kindermans.
Aye.
Ms. Akers Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Smith, aye. Thank you all.
Before you go, um, does the board have, um, a preference for your September meeting to be, uh, in person? Or, um, virtual? Um, we do have some ability to do hybrid at Kai's Road, but, um. It, it is not one where, uh, we can have significant people in the room, given, um, the mandates for. Um, seem to be happening with social distancing again.
So what's it gonna look like for that meeting? Is it?
It's the two items, so far it's the two items we had tonight because they were seven and seven oh five, right? It's this decision and the.
There's, there's a three other ones.
Oh, there are. Okay, well, maybe we shouldn't have set them for seven, seven oh five then.
Well, Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't s- set the. Right. Agenda for September and the times yet.
No, I needed to do that.
It's just the materials online so we can see that there's.
Yes, what's, what's coming down. Yep.
I, I mean, I, I have to say personally that I would, I'm, and I'm like in favor of getting back to. To live meetings as soon as possible, but, um, I'm definitely aware of many organizations, including my own law firm. That have pushed off, um, the return to work, uh, for at least a month. And it just seems to me that consistent with, consistent with all of the work that all those organizations have put into making it seem that that's the decision that they should make. That we too should kind of hang on to the, to the.
I agree with that.
Meetings.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I agree with that as well. I, I'm, I've been always in favor of being in person, but. Given where we're trending right now, it's just. You know, I'd be perfectly happy to wait it out a bit longer.
Hey, great.
So as long as we, do we have any limitations on that at this stage, Elizabeth, in terms of our town requirements? Or is the town pushing us one way or the other? The, no?
Nope, um, the select board, it is entirely up to each individual board and committee and, um. What they feel comfortable with, so, so far, um, there's very few boards that have gone to, um, in person.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I, I would love to get in person as quickly as possible, but I just, I think we're going again counter trend here if we do it. So I just, I don't want to.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
If you'd like to adjourn the meeting, Mr. Smith?
Oh, sure. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
You don't, you don't need to.
Break the quorum.
Good, I'm gonna adjourn.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Take care, everyone. Take care, everyone.
Thank you, Heather.
Night.
Good night.